Do we have a moment of silence or no?
Good evening. If everybody would please take their seats. If everyone would please take their seats. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are ready to begin this evening's special board meeting. The special board meeting of August 30th, 2021 is now called to order. The time is 5:02 PM. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. This evening's agenda includes public comments, two items under Board Recommendations, and four items under Other Business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
That we adopt the agenda as printed.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. And Ms. Ginton, second. And please record. Oh, 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 sorry. Ms. Thomas, are we putting that up for...
I haven't got it yet. Did you get it? No.
Thank you. If you approve. Seven zero, motion passes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Prey Bruno, please address the items of public comment.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Jordan. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a public comment card, please put it in the basket provided at the back. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff located in the hallway outside of the boardroom. The rules concerning public comment are posted and will be made from the microphone in the back of the room where the stanchions are. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on school district issues. Personal attacks on individuals or abusive language are prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, and booing, unreasonably loud and/or offensive language, swearing, cursing, or display of temper are prohibited. Speakers may not address board members by name and personal attacks against individual board members, the board as a whole, the superintendent, or district staff are prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11 and may be removed from the chambers. There will be one warning, and we ask that you govern yourself accordingly. We will take recesses as necessary if there is not decorum in the chambers. Please remember that it is unlawful and a second-degree misdemeanor to knowingly disrupt or interfere with a school board meeting. Per Board Policy 1.11, the time per speaker is three minutes if there are twenty, two minutes if there are thirty, and one minute if there are thirty-one speakers or more. The maximum time allowed for public comment is one hour, sixty speakers. You will find a countdown on the big screen in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. We encourage you to address the board as a whole versus individual board members as they act as a collective body. Please state your name, whether you live in Lee County, and if you have a student attending one of our district public schools prior to making your comment. I will call your names five speakers at a time. Please follow the staff's direction when lining up. Madam Chair, we have sixty speakers that wish to address the board this evening.
Thank you. Please make sure you have completed a public comment card if you intend to provide public comment. The card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information to staff or follow-ups. The cards are located with staff in the hallway. David Newlin as the Executive Director of Safety and Security or your designee for this meeting and future meetings. I ask that you assist the chair and the parliamentarian in providing warnings to members of the public and remove individuals for violation of Board Policy 1.11. In addition, if there is not decorum during this meeting, I will call for a five-minute recess. We will continue to recess this meeting as needed, increasing five minutes each time. Members of the dais, when a recess is called, I ask that you leave the chambers. Of course, it goes without saying that during the recess, board members will not discuss any matters that is pending on the agenda or will come before this body to avoid any sunshine violation. I will reiterate what Mr. Prey Bruno just said, and that it is unlawful and a second-degree misdemeanor to knowingly disrupt or interfere with a school board meeting. We would also appreciate it if you would state your name, whether you live in Lee County, and if you have a child in our schools prior to making your comments. Mr. Prey Bruno, please proceed with the public comments.
For the following individuals, please line up. Winnie Harrison, Brendan Leslie, Mary Del Godis, Yvonne Ritzinger, Susan C.
Hi, my name is Mary Del Judas. I have a six-year-old ASD child who attends a public school here in Lee County. That stands for Autism Spectrum Disorder. I am for parents' choice, which every parent should have. I'm not for mandating, dictating, forcing, and the coercion of masks on all children. The parents' choice isn't good enough. Why? Because of the hatred for our governor. Our children are not your political pawns. Our children belong to us, the parents. My child not covering her face has no bearing on the child that covers theirs. I feel safe in my choice for my child. We don't live for the collective. We live for our freedoms, our rights as parents.
Hello, my name is Yvonne Ritzinger. I do live in Lee County, and I do not have any children in the school system. I'm here today to say I can't understand what all this mask business is about. There is not one study, not one, that talks about the effectiveness of masks. They are ineffective in the transmission of COVID, and then there are an additional, there are forty-seven studies that prove that. There are thirty-two studies that prove that they are negative health effects. Those negative effects include lowered oxygen levels, impeded breathing, increase in headaches, decreased blood oxygen to the levels of the brain, adverse skin reactions, yeast infections, dental issues, mouth fungus, bacterial and fungal infections, and yes, even ear protrusion. And yet, those are just a few of the ones that are brought up regularly. That's only the physical problems. We're not even addressing the emotional problems. I suggest you reconsider what was passed and listen to the parents who know best.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Winnie Harrison. I do not have children in the schools, but I have four children in the world. I do live in Lee County. I'm against a mask mandate. This is political. You just want to stick it to DeSantis. This was confirmed last meeting when a board member defended poor Biden from criticism. But that left a bad taste in your mouth a few days later. The way this board treats people, they are paid to represent, is despicable. Randomly limiting public comment, shushing adults like misbehaving children, trying to adjourn a meeting to silence them, after Byron Donalds spoke, of course, and one member walking away during a vote rather than facing us and actually abstaining, although why would you, and taping off half the seats. What the heck? Except for the one person who listens, this anti-child board needs to resign immediately.
Oh, clapping.
I'm sorry. Please, we cannot have clapping. We're here to hear everyone. Please.
Hello there. My name is Brendan Leslie, and many of you know me as Florida's conservative journalist. Since this school board refuses to be held accountable and do an interview with me, I'm here today as a Lee County taxpayer to stand shoulder to shoulder with all these beautiful people in this room. The charade that you're dragging this community through is completely asinine. This board is only focused on forced mask mandates, raising our taxes, and making our kids believe they can change their gender at any given moment, or maybe encouraging them into thinking they can identify as a zebra. All of these have one thing in common. It's a radical left agenda. You're pushing against the parents' will, and we, the people, mind you. This argument was never about whether you should wear a mask or not. It's about letting parents have control over their children's health, and what you're telling us is that they don't, and the government does. This is something I would expect in Communist China. I want all of you to look at me when I tell you this. I will not let you spit all over the Constitution without being held accountable. I spent the last two years building a crazy movement, and this movement is going to make sure every single one of you enjoys an early retirement in 2022 and 202024. Chris Patrica.
There is no, excuse me. This is your first warning.
Hi, my name is Susan.
Excuse me. Madam Chair, may we have a five-minute recess?
Oh, I wanted to talk.
Madam Chair, you reconvening?
I wait for Mr. Sills to turn it on. So obviously, we are back on. So yes, will you go ahead and call? And then we'll have Ms. Susan Speaker. Do you want to call the other ones out first?
I'm going to call the next five speakers. Tara Jenner, Chris Quackenbush, Keith Olson, Crystal Varve, Lisa Cohen-Atkinson. And just a reminder that the waiting line is on the, I guess it's the right side. Do not stand behind the speaker, please. We are social distancing. Please do not stand behind the speaker. And we'll start once the individuals are in the proper location for their public speaking. Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Well, my name is Susan. I've got a senior in high school that's barely hanging on because of what you've done. Barely hanging on to graduate. So I'm speaking to all the moms and dads out there that are watching, worried about their decision-making rights being stripped away right now. Look at the pathetic board before you. It's a special interest group harming the way our children learn. You have the right to demand to see what your children are being taught in the classroom, down to every book and paper. If you feel like your child has fallen through the cracks of a broken school system like mine has as an ESE kid, it's your parental right to do something about it. You have the right to remove your kids from the public school system. And if you feel that they are being taught anything more than, more complicated than English, math, social studies...
Next speaker, please. Speaker, please. You are out of order, ma'am.
Tara Jenner. Individual rights are natural rights that can only be taken by due process of law and in accordance with the Constitution. People owe nothing to the public so long as they do not trespass upon the rights of others. Freedom from bodily restraint and also the right of the individual to bring up children and generally to enjoy those privileges, long recognized at common law as essential to the orderly pursuit of happiness for free men, are guaranteed liberties. Denying parental rights under the guise of protecting public interests or making others feel safe violates rights protected by the Constitution of the State of Florida and the U.S. The rights of parents to decide what's in the best interest of their individual children and to opt their children out from wearing masks must remain in place. Any other decision usurps the role of the parents. What's next? Will you mandate vaccines or maybe even behavior outside of the school building all in the interest of safety? William Pitt Younger said necessity is the plea of every infringement of human freedom. It is the argument of...
Thank you. Next speaker. Please remember when you come to the microphone to state your name, to also advise if you are a Lee County resident and if you have children in the system. Thank you.
I'm Chris Quackenbush. I live in Lee County, and it's none of your business whether I have kids in this school or not. I pay taxes, and I do have kids in the school system. When did we forget first do no harm with medical treatments? That's the Hippocratic Oath. And as we know, the science is clear. Masks don't work, never did work, whether it's a local emergency or not. But we will work to remove each and every one of you by promoting the governor remove you by executive order for incompetence. We will beat you at the ballot box. We will beat you by keeping our children from the poison of your propaganda and child abuse. We will not comply.
Will the following individuals, please line up. Melissa Coulson, Keith Suskamp, Sierra Andes, Christine Divageli, Lydsey Young.
Keith Olson, Lee County. It's not your business about my family dynamics. During the August 17 school board meeting, you proposed your pro-mask mandate position with disgusting self-righteousness. You claimed that mandating masks was a higher moral ground. You indicated that those of us who think that parents should decide either really don't love our children, are ignorant, are biased, and uninformed rabble. Your word. On Thursday, the 26th of August, we found this quote from an important document. Almost a slap in the face to U.S. COVID-19 measures that are requiring children to mask up for other school year, the United Kingdom has dropped its mask requirements for school children. Yet you have avoided us by voting before this meeting to go for your mask mandate.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. No one should be standing behind the next speaker, so please step back.
Crystal Varve, one student in the Lee County school system, and I do live in Lee County. First question, where's the concern about your pension as it was the last meeting? I watched bits and pieces of the workshop today, and I heard one of the medical professionals state not only had they had medical training, but they were scientists as well. I have a question. Are they also data scientists? Have you looked at the data in comparison to Florida numbers versus other states? Florida has been the most criticized state through this whole pandemic, and not only have our numbers been better than other states, for example, Hawaii has a statewide mask mandate, their hospitalizations are up 2,000%. Rhode Island is the number one state per capita with the highest caseload. They're also number five in the United States for highest percentage of vaccination rates. Do you look at these data points? Don't just listen to the politically correct medical professionals.
Next speaker, please.
Lisa Cohen-Atkinson, Cape Coral taxpayer. I pulled my kids from your schools. I do have some information here that if you're saying that Lee Health issued a state of emergency, you are wrong. They are not authorized to issue any emergency. Now, I've also been told that there's no livestream, so that's kind of crappy. But we're live on Facebook, everybody. Say hey. All right, so let's talk about the Hope Scholarship. Let's get your kids out of these government-run schools. These tyrants got to go. They don't care about your children. As a matter of fact, they hate them. They hate your kids. They hate my kids. They hate your kids. They hate my kids. Get it? Okay, take the control back. Get your kids into the Hope Scholarship. Get this taken.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Keith Suskamp, MD. I'm a practicing physician in Lee County, award certified in physical medicine and rehabilitation. I refute the so-called petition presented to the board and electronically signed by a number of physicians who have held themselves out as representatives of the physicians in Lee County. They are not. Lee Physician Group alone has over 750 primary and specialty care physicians. There are many more in private practice like me, and I believe at least 1,200 practicing physicians in Lee County. The positioners are a minority who do not represent or speak for me or many of the others. The information they have presented as fact is faulty and misleading at best. They have cherry picked the statistics about COVID and the effectiveness of masks. The data has been manipulated. Physicians are not the expert in this field. Doctors should never be dictators. Physicians can differ in their recommendations. Our job as physicians is to help people make wise and informed decisions regarding their own health care, not to strong-arm them. The school district and government should never dictate medical treatment either. This is not a question of whether or not masks are useful. This is a liberty issue.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Sierra Andes. I'm sharing a quote. I'd like to read you something found in our news files dated August 16, 1945, the day after the Japanese surrendered and World War II ended. "The guns are silent now, and so are many of the men whose hands once held them. Never again will they see their wives or mothers. Never again will they hear their children laugh. And never again will they smell the sweet sense of home. And for what? For what did these husbands and fathers, these brothers and sons, give their lives so many thousands of miles from home? I say it was for one word, and that word is freedom. The freedom to pray, to write, to speak, to feel, to be, as we see fit and not as others would dictate to us. To this freedom, which has been so dearly bought for us, it is up to us, the living, to dedicate our lives and our futures to its eternal protection," spoken by Scott Bakula in Quantum Leap.
Thank you. Will the following individuals, please line up. Ally Locke, Deborah Blaine, Rochelle Jocelyn, Denise Nystrom, Valinda Neely.
Lydsey Young. I live in Lee County. I wish I could say that I was surprised that we're here again today, but that would be a lie. The fact that you all have decided to ignore the decades worth of science about masks and push this agenda is sick. But after great thought, I came up with a way that we can deal with this. If we remove all the desks out of schools and replace them with tables, and then we start calling teachers servers, maybe then the kids could take their masks off because they're in restaurants. Then they're safe. Then they're safe. This right here is the school board policy of responsibilities. Your responsibility. Nowhere in here does it say, and I've read it multiple times, nowhere does it say you have any right to help me parent my child or make decisions for me and my child. I'm going to tell you that your time is up. The people of the state and this district are rising up, and you have awakened a sleeping beast. No longer will you be able to work in an empty room and vote on things without hearing things from the.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Melissa Coulson. I have a son in the district. So many things went through my head coming up here. I would wake up in the middle of the night and I would think, oh, I'm going to say this, I'm going to say that, because I am so shocked as a mother that we all collectively have to come up here again and again. All we want is the best for our children. We love our children. We are not afraid. If you're afraid, put the mask on your child. Keep your child at home. Go to a school that has masks. I don't get this. This is, in fact, studies have said you have a 26% decrease in your immune system when you put that mask on. What is going to happen to our children? Maybe the reason why we have people in the hospitals all this mask-wearing, did we ever think of that? Did we ever think of that? I can't even believe this. Every breath that I take, I love my children and I.
Your next speaker, please.
Christine Divageli, and y'all know where I live. I am with power to parent, and I stand here today speaking on behalf of over 1,000 parents and community members that disagree with school districts that attempt to speak on our behalf and rob us of our right to choose. In my hand is a petition with real signatures on it, calling for an emergency session to be held to protect parental rights. We have gathered close to 1,000 signatures in just the last 100 hours, and we are well on our way to thousands more. I urge you to uphold the law and protect parental, the parents' right to choose. Should you choose to instead break the law, which is what you have done today, we the parents will take every measure necessary, including pressing charges against any person that attempts to rob us of our parental right, and they will be held personally liable for damages to our children. Our paperwork is prepared, and we are ready to have you personally served tomorrow morning, myself included. I implore you to do the right thing, but I know you will not. So parents, fuck.
Next speaker, please.
I have two full-grown children. I didn't educate them here, thank God. Both college-educated, both very bright, very successful. And I happen to be an ESL teacher, have been for 45 years. It takes 11 years for a child to develop a language, 11 for all people. That's why we still have English that we teach our kids after they're fluent. You may think they're fluent, they're not fluent. Putting a mask on those children is robbing them of their education. You are robbing these kids of their developmental rights in terms of education. Are you educators? Don't you know that? By the way, I saw an assault out in the parking lot. And I saw it happen. A man was assaulted. A woman threw a can of water in the man's face, and the cop preached Christianity to the man who was assaulted. Thank you.
Rochelle Jocelyn, yes, Lee County. I have my children in Lee County because they give us school choice. So I can choose what school my child goes to, but you're telling me that I can't choose whether they have a mask on or not, which makes absolutely no sense. Proverbs 16:5 says, "People who are proud are hard to deal with because they refuse correction and good advice. They are disgusting, hateful, and exceedingly offensive to the Lord. They cannot be told anything because they think they already know everything. Nothing left to say, except these are our children, not yours. We will not comply." How dare you put this pressure on these children in school? Quarantined in school, quarantined in school. You're creating a mental health crisis for all of these children, including my beautiful daughter who has anxiety. I believe the rest of my time is a moment of silence for all of the kids that have either tried to commit suicide or unfortunately were successful.
Next speaker, please.
Ally Locke. I'm a teacher in the district with two kids in the school system as well. It's interesting that I've heard the board say over and over again that masks are about health and not about politics. But I'd like to know, if our board was so concerned with health, why are you not pushing for the things that actually affect a student's health, virus or not? Have you ever seen how many vending machines and what's in them in every high school in the county? Have you ever taken a stand against the quality of food that our children are served in school lunches? Have you ever fought for our children to be given water instead of milk with their lunches? Have you ever fought for the children to spend more time outside during the school day? You want to remove a parent's choice to put a mask on their child. You want to make that health decision for families. But then why aren't you as concerned about parents who send their children to school with a soda to drink or Doritos to eat? Or requiring parents to log 30 minutes of exercise at home? This is not about health.
Thank you. Will the following individuals please line up? Darrell Slack, Jenny Darling, Maria Martinez, Laura Sanchez, Kim Hoskins. Just a reminder that you are not to stand behind the speaker.
Valinda Neely, Lee County, two kids. I see you don't listen to common sense because if that's the case, we wouldn't be here again. You see, people have been masking for the better part of a year and a half now. If masks worked, we wouldn't be having this discussion. You see, the virus is still here, isn't it? So how long are we going to keep up this charade? How many more variants are going to arise to make you feel you need to keep masking? Suppressing people's natural immune systems for a year and a half did nothing to eradicate this virus, and it won't this time either. Despite your desire for control, you won't be able to control this, nor us. If you want to wear the mask and give yourself the false sense of protection, then by all means, go ahead and go for it. If they work and you're wearing one, then my children shouldn't have to. You're protected. Logic, right? But aside from common sense, let's talk about freedom. We have here, based on our beautiful Constitution, the God-given right to life and liberty. Life and liberty is allowing my boys to breathe easy, to smile and just be kids, for them not to be muzzled, causing more harm than good, just to appease your distorted power trip and unconstitutional mandates.
Now I feel better. You know, I just scratched what I was going to say. Dr. Savage, I am very, very disappointed in you. And that board knows how many times I have come out to support you when they have been throwing you under the bus.
Ms. Nystrom.
Excuse me.
Ms. Nystrom.
You are the only one that has ethics.
This is a warning. Ms. Nystrom, there is a board policy that discusses calling out board members, the superintendent, and the board. Just please keep, just please keep, please keep the comments pursuant to the policy, please. Please. And that's one warning.
Ms. Giovinelli, you have ethics. Thank you very much. Everybody else, you drank the Kool-Aid.
Madam Chair.
And Patrica, you are just a manipulative, idle no-what that needs to go.
Madam Chair, five-minute recess, please. Actually, we're now at 10 minutes.
Mr. Bree Bruno, can we go ahead and reconvene?
So I believe the next speaker is ready.
Thank you.
And it's none of your business. Parents, I'm here to talk to you. Last time I was here, I was thrown out because I called them what they are, most of them, which is communist Marxist. I was born in Mexico City. I am married to a Cuban. Listen well, you don't live in America anymore. This is not the America you know. This is infested by communist Marxist tyrants. What you see up there, they're nothing but Marxists and tyrants. They don't respect your rights because they don't believe you have any-
Excuse me ma'am, you're out of order. I'm sorry. But excuse me, this is your first warning. Ma'am? This is, this is your last warning. Just a reminder, Board Policy 1.11, subsection 7A states, improper conduct at school board meetings include booing, hissing, clapping, shouting, cursing, disrespectful comments to the school board members, school board administrators, or other individuals shall not be tolerated, nor shall the school board tolerate other behavior which the parliamentarian or the chairperson considers disruptive or improper. Presenters shall confine their remarks to educationally relevant issues. Attacks on individuals and abusive comments shall not be allowed. Speakers who fail to follow this rule shall be ruled out of order by the parliamentarian or chairperson or their designee. Any speaker continuing with such remarks shall be required to relinquish the lectern. If an individual continues to violate these rules at school board meetings, the chairperson may issue a warning that continued violation will result in removal from the meeting. If the individual continues to violate the rules after being warned, the chairperson may order the individual removed from the meeting. It is unlawful and a second degree misdemeanor to knowingly disrupt or interfere with a school board meeting. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Dr. Jennifer Darling. Apparently tomorrow is my son's last day attending Lee County School. As someone who just fled from tyrannical Michigan a few weeks ago, I am ashamed that I have to be here tonight because you are playing politics with my son's health and education. Shame on you know who for not giving us the opportunity to give public comment before unilaterally deciding to override my rights as a parent. Just a few hours ago, I witnessed board members ask questions and the answer was, "We do not have that data." How in good conscience can you vote before getting it? If the mask requirement is truly about mitigating risk, why aren't Lee County Schools recommending the significantly more effective iMas plus prophylactic protocol? You said there cannot be masked and unmasked classes because that is discriminatory. Can you please explain to me how banning my son from school is not discrimination? Is the Google class option that's available for quarantine kids going to be offered to kids that are kicked out of school because they cannot or will not wear a mask? If not, how is that not discriminatory? Sweden is having great success with the herd immunity route. Why do you think that is?
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Darryl Slack. I'm here to speak tonight. This is my son, Riker. He goes to one of your schools. Byron Donalds stood here two weeks ago along with Matt Caldwell and talked about public trust and how his board needed to work on it. I'm not sure what route you chose not to go with, but the route you went with was guard towers locking people out in the heat, trying to pass a mask mandate again while nobody was paying attention, and having little five to 10 minute pout sessions every time we clap too much was probably not the way to go. This is a dog and pony show. The parents have spoken. Parents, we have spoken. It's clear what we want. The only thing that's more clear than what we want is the fact that they don't care what we want, that they have disdain for what we want. And for those of you who are watching at home, or maybe we're watching Tara Jenner speak, when Tara said, "What's next, mandatory vaccinations?" Betsy Vaughn shook her head yes, and she's doing it thumbs up right now. Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Sorry to attack you person on person.
Again, this is your, excuse me sir, this is your first warning.
Can you add some time back on, please? My timeout warning really took some time away there. In 436 days, four of those seats are up for election. Pay attention to vote them out.
Next speaker, please. Will the following individuals please line up? Mary Ellen Jones, Edward Drass, Andrea Biggs, Jessica Sarmast, Heather Boyle.
Kim Hoskins, Lee County. Two beautiful gifts from God, attending your schools. Today I signed a liability and indemnification form for an optional school sports activity, not to protect my child, but to protect the school and district. Even with PPE and hydration, I understand my child might get hurt, but participation is optional. I take it you won't need to issue liability and indemnification forms when you mandate something. You have an unproven hypothesis with more unknowns than knowns and you are considering performing an involuntary experiment on children. Like to know what data you'll be collecting to prove your hypothesis. The CDC can use some clear science. It's been three months since they told us vaccines work and you'll be safe. Masked and vaccinated are still testing positive. If you decide to forcefully prescribe this mask treatment to children, you are saying that the mask they wear will prevent or treat the sickness and they should not expect to be injured by it. This is deception.
Next speaker.
My name is Laura Sanchez. I do have a son. I live in Lee County and I do have a son with an ESE in the school system. We did rescue him from foster care. I'm his guardian parent. I'll never be his biological mom. He didn't have language when he came to us at the age of three. We've worked very hard to give him language. Part of giving a child language is being able to see their mouth when they speak. Anyway, that being said, we the people, we the people of Lee County, respectfully submit this letter as our official notice regarding a majority vote of no confidence in the current Lee County School Board. We, the people of Lee County, write this letter in great hesitation and only after much debate and discussion over the masking of our precious children. We will all ultimately pay a high price for doing what we know in our hearts is the right thing to do. Meetings after meetings after meetings have been held and not one shred of evidence has been brought forth-
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Speaker.
Hello, my name is Mary Ellen Jones. This is my first meeting. I do live in Lee County and none of your business if I have children in your school district or not. First of all, I find it really appalling that all of you are stepping on the parental rights of people that have kids in this district. You've got no business making choices about their health or their well-being. Your job is to make sure they get an education and that they can go out in the world and be productive citizens, period. That's your job. I have watched you tonight disrespect residents in this county by making them leave because your little feelings were hurt. I don't care if your feelings are hurt. You are making a decision about masks based on a zero risk factor percentage of kids being hospitalized because they haven't worn a mask. Fifteen kids, that number was thrown out by one of your members, I won't dare mention a name, without doing any math. The math is statistically insignificant, yet you are sitting here dragging people back again to talk about these darn-
Next speaker, please. Excuse me ma'am, you're out of order. Excuse me, you're out of order.
Hello, my name is Jessica Sarmast and I do live in Lee County and I have two boys that go to Lee County Schools. First, I want to tell you that masks don't work. They haven't worked. None of the kids wear them correctly. They touch their masks. They eat their masks. I have a boy that has asthma. Do you know how that affects his breathing day to day? I have another son that has ADHD. Can you imagine how difficult it is for somebody who has a disability to have something in front of your face that you're already distracted by every noise in the room? Having a mask on there, it's very distracting, let alone you have anxiety because you're already worried about your day. So, and we've not even discussed the mental health that these kids are suffering from these masks. You are giving all of these kids mental issues and you don't even care about their mental health. You just care about yours.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Edward Drass, M.D. I oppose this letter that you received from 230 physicians and I wish that the white-coated supporters with the masks in the front would respond to this letter. The main signer of this letter is a Dr. Taib who runs a clinic for weight loss. There is another signer on here. There's a dermatologist who is not an expert witness on keeping children safe by masking. Of the 230 signers, many are retired, many are not physicians, many were blindsided by this mail, email letter, and I've spoken to many of them and I don't believe they knew what they were actually signing or what impact this letter had on individual rights. I know how to read scientific studies and separate true science from baloney. This letter represents baloney. Will this board base its masking policy on experience and sound data or on misinformation? Fear, prejudice, and hyperbole. Let the parents in this room-
Next speaker. Will the following individuals please line up? Erica Gerling, Mary Hartley, Victoria Zinter, Rick Romero, Rob Pillier.
My name is Andrea Biggs. I am from Lee County School District. I'm born and raised. This is despicable. If you want to follow science, I have some for you. I have two children with ASD in your school district. Last year, they had mask exemptions. Neither one of them wore one all year long, with immune compromised systems at that. None of them got sick. Not once. Not a common cold, not sniffles, not cough, nothing. I have a high school student who unfortunately doesn't have a medical exemption. He went to school all last year. He suffered immensely. He had bad acne problems, cavities, sick every time I turned around, quarantined every time I turned around. So if you want to follow science, the science is, the masks don't work. They're making our kids sick. They're actually working in the reverse. And I will not have another administrator or teacher tell my child that if they don't get vaccinated, they'll kill their dogs. Okay? That will not happen again. We-
Speaker, please.
Heather Boyle, Lee County resident, one student in the Lee County School District. Last year, my 15-year-old son spent his first year of high school doing Home Connect due to your overreaching PPE policy. That was one of the hardest and most emotionally draining years for him, and since the superintendent has now decided to violate my parental rights to make decisions for my child, I will not allow that to happen again this year. My son knows to be respectful and kind. However, you are all unnoticed that he will not comply and I am sure he will not be alone. Our family will not comply while you attempt to make medical decisions under the guise of public safety. You are attempting to speak on my behalf to make these important health decisions for my child, which have already been secured recently in the Florida Parental Bill of Rights, and it's not appreciated. Also, earlier, Dr. Savage, you said that if the mask implementation saves one life, then it's worth it. So what about the children who experience anxiety and depression due to masking? Do their lives not count?
Erica Gerling, Lee County, one child. Wash your hands and say your prayers. Jesus and germs are everywhere. The virus is .3 microns in size. So fabric blocks the virus? Those are just lies. Data has proven no benefit with masks. It even says so in the box if anyone asks. Distancing and vaccines aren't strategies that win. It's herd immunity and therapeutics. That's how this ends. 99.9. Live through this flu, especially the kids, and the data proves that too. Science and law shouldn't be changing so fast. Has Nuremberg taught us nothing of medical tyranny in the past? Don't be compelled by fear or by force. Listen to God. He is our source. He doesn't give fear but power, love, and a sound mind. Reject the propaganda and we will be fine. One nation under God, united we stand. We pray to God, Jehovah. Unite us now. Heal this land. Heal this land.
My name is Victoria Zintec, former Lee County School District teacher. I did one year, and one day I will stand here and tell you what you should be focusing on because it is not COVID protocols. But we'll talk to common sense right now. Based on the workshop that I heard earlier today, we have no more information this year than we did last year. The least that could have been provided is data on masked and unmasked students because we know we have schools with that last year. The question I have is, if the surge started before school started, why are the schools being used as the parameter? As a teacher, I'm going to tell you right now that students are in the class together, no matter what. They're masked in the class, but they're pretty much making out at recess, and they're together in PE, and the COVID protocols for bathrooms are insane. If a kid needs a bathroom, a staff member has to come and take them to the bathroom. You're saying we don't have any staff. I could go on forever.
Thank you. Will the following individuals please line up? Jennifer Gillan, Doreen McCarthy, Terry Cross, Amy Keenum, Jane Santagello.
Hi, I'm Mary Hartley. I moved here from Illinois, the commie state of Illinois. We, my kids are so excited about moving here because they said we have freedom to choose for ourselves. My eighth grader said, hey, by the way, I don't have to have masks. I don't have acne, and my teeth don't rot. My teeth don't smell. I brought those in smell. My oldest, 15-year-old freshman last year, he, from the mask to the quarantine, back and forth, he became, he had anxiety, and even talked about suicide. So what's going to happen when my child commits suicide? Because you guys are making this choice. We came down here for a better life for our children, and you guys are taking that away. Plus, what sense does all this make? We're outside, and no one's wearing masks anyhow. And then they're in the classroom, and they're all wearing masks. We're all going to get sick anyhow, and it doesn't stop. The masks don't stop. We've been living up in Illinois for the last year and a half, and we've been masked, and the virus is still spread. It doesn't work. It doesn't work. And I hope teachers walk out, and I hope they boycott. You can't fire them all. Teachers, if you're here, boycott, walk out. Do not make, do not wear these masks at all.
Next speaker.
Rob Pelissero, Lee County resident. I do have children in the school system. I could sit here and quote you guys a ton of statistics from the study that the CDC did where they left out the summary, the important part, which is that masks for schoolchildren is null. It doesn't prove good or bad. So you guys say you want to focus on science, and that, you know, this is important for our kids' health. As stated tonight, there are no study that proves that masks are good. If anything, to the contrary, as everyone stated tonight, a lot of bad health benefits. We know the repercussions from young children trying to learn how to read. And as a school board member, I would be really ashamed. This is my first time at one of these meetings. This is gross. Our job is to educate our children to help increase their IQ. I would ask that the school board consider their EQ and read the room. Read the county. Read the area. You guys are making your one-off decisions based on your own personal beliefs, but that is not what is best for our schoolchildren, and it is not scientific-based, so don't pretend to-
Next speaker. Please.
Rick Romeo. Clearly, most of the board doesn't care about what the overwhelming majority of parents said two weeks ago. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here today, standing against your latest bait-and-switch attempt. And clearly, you don't actually care about our kids. If you did, you'd require students to take an anatomy and physiology class so that they learn how the body and immune system works. You'd require a nutrition class so that they learn about food choices and that they either build health or feed illness and disease. You'd require them to get out in the fresh air and exercise, and instead of teaching them to be afraid of air and their friends, you teach them how to manage stress. Masking is literally the laziest thing that you can do to protect kids. Lastly, it's obvious that the only science you buy into is political science and fear. So be reminded that oxygen is essential, and we do not co-parent with you. So if masks actually work, keep them optional.
Jennifer, parent of two boys in Diplomat Elementary and a biology teacher. Joey is in fifth grade, has ADHD. He's extremely worried and stressed over the possibility of having to wear a mask. He did Class Connect last year and had to repeat fifth grade. He loves school now, is doing well. A mask will interfere with his concentration and impede his breathing. Danny's in third grade, has Down Syndrome. He refuses to wear a mask. If there is a mask mandate in school, Danny will be fighting a teacher over a mask instead of learning. I know what is best for my children. I should have the right to decide. There is no blanket rule for every child. I also, we do have the Parent Bill of Rights that should be going on right now. I brought concrete proof that masks do not work. I emailed this to you. It shows that there is less than 1.5% difference between the schools with a mask mandate as opposed to schools without a mask mandate. The four schools with the highest rate of infection had a mask mandate. Of the 74.1-
Speaker. Next speaker, please. Ma'am, you're out of order. Next speaker, please. No, you may not. Ma'am, you're out of order.
My name is Amy Keenum, and I have five kids in your school system. We all know you've already made up your minds and voted to mandate masks. Thanks for letting us know. I suggest that you check out Section 6 and 7 of the Parent Bill of Rights and stop treading on my rights and my children's rights. Demanding compliance isn't a good thing, and it surely isn't American. Do you also suggest we wear masks while we're at home? Exposure, right? Let us choose what's best for our kids. My daughter's mask, she's 10 and chooses to, are thin pieces of fabric that I purchased at Joann Fabrics, and my neighbor made them in her living room. They are not protecting anybody from anything. They are just matching her outfits. According to your dashboard, less than 2% of the students and staff have tested positive for COVID. That's not really scary facts in my brain. But, by the way, I may not be sitting next to the lady to my left, but I walked past her and breathed in her direction. So these tapes and the one-way hallways are absolutely ridiculous. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Norine McCarthy. I live in Lee County, and my grandchildren go to school here. I feel it's the parent's choice, just as the way you have it now. If they want to wear a mask, that's fine. If you want to opt out, that's fine also. It should be completely up to the parent. We go out and we shop everywhere. We don't have to wear a mask. So why the heck should they have to wear a mask in school? But since this is my first meeting, I am appalled at what is going on here. I have just turned 75 years old, and I have never been witness to anything like this before. I plan to be at every meeting moving forward because this is very offensive to me. And I have been told by several people that maybe I should run. And maybe I should. So my name is Norine McCarthy. I will be at every meeting moving forward. And I, again, I am just totally appalled at what's going on at this meeting. I never thought this is what-
Thank you very much. Will the following individuals please line up? Jane Santagel, I'm sorry, Amy Moore, Dr. Parissima Taib, Dr. Kavitha Tashner, Dr. Tasha Wallace, Deborah Hopkins.
My name is Jane Santangelo. I'm a Lee County resident, and it's none of your business who I have or have not in the school district. I was actually very impressed with your mission of having each child fulfill their potential and reach their potential. But I don't understand how you're going to do that with masks that are worn properly, are well-documented to cause harm to their wearers. Masks worn improperly and reused are contaminated and dangerous. It only leads me to believe that you are, for all the education that you have, you're intellectually lazy, intellectually dishonest. You listen to a narrative of string pullers who are protecting your whatever. And for all the education you have, you've been taught nothing but to obey, without any ability to use critical thinking.
My name is Terry Kress. I lived in this county for 19 years. And I guess the only thing that I can say that, I'm a veteran of more than 20 years of military. And I'm so disappointed in thinking that my 20 years contributed to what I see in front of me. I want you to look back to the audience and remember that your voters are unmasked. So the ones that are masked, those are the ones that will vote for you. Beyond all that, I have in my hand evidence, solid evidence, like has been presented by many other people here tonight, that masks are unhealthy. Why would you bathe a child in something unhealthy? You know, I look at you, and I don't see your expressions. I don't see your faces. The teachers' faces aren't seen, and the kids' faces aren't seen in their own classroom. I've read stories about this. This is just amazingly stupid. And I'm not being disrespectful. It's a fact.
Will the following individuals please line up? Lisa Schro, Christian White, Stasia Murphy, Herb Strobe, Brian Briggs. Biggs, Brian Briggs.
Amy Moore, Lee County resident. I pulled my kids out of your schools. First of all, in 2010, Rockefeller Foundation had a, they wrote the script for all of this entire pandemic. It's called Operation Lockstep. You can look it up, and it dictates everything that's happening right now. All of you are bought. You're bought, and you are on an agenda. But I want to tell you what the people that run your agenda say about you, that we will get rid of them by making them believe that it is for their own good. Overpopulation is mostly useless. It's something that's too costly economically, socially, too. Much better when the human machine comes to an abrupt standstill than when it gradually deteriorates. Neither will be, it will, we will not test millions because for your intelligence, you bet that you will lose. You find cause, something, a pandemic-
Your next speaker, please.
I want to thank the board for having this meeting tonight. My name is Tasha Wallace. I'm a board-certified family medicine physician, practicing in Lee County for 18 years. I'm a graduate of the public school system, and I have two children enrolled in Lee County Public Schools. I'm deeply invested into the welfare of Lee County residents, both adults and children. And I would like to thank the board members for reinstating the mask mandate to keep faculty and students safe. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Deborah Hopkins. I live in Lee County. I do not currently have any children here, but have many friends that do. I would like to ask every parent and grandparent in here one question. Have you ever sat down with your children and discussed these issues without, excuse me, without your political bias being a part of that?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, ma'am. Excuse me. We will not have comments back to the speakers. Please be respectful. I'm sorry, ma'am.
And please direct everything to us, Ms. Hopkins. Direct it to the board, please. Go ahead, continue, please.
occasions, if we can turn our mic on, please.
Hello there. Thank you very much. Board members, I also ask that you sit down with your children. Children are much smarter than we give them credit for. We need to allow them a voice in this issue. And I want to give you this. I believe that children are future. Teach them well and let them lead the way. Show them all the beauty they express inside. Give them a sense-
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
My name is Lisa Shrowey. I'm a para that works in the Lee District Elementary School. This is what I witness every day. Masks are dirty. Not washed for days, if not weeks, if you ask to give a child a new one. They say, no, I want to wear my favorite mask. A staff member actually told a fifth grader last year that you have to change your mask like you change your underwear. They throw the mask on the floor, they go to the bathroom with a mask on, they come out with the mask off. What's happening in the bathroom? They're constantly touching them, they're sneezing, they have running noses. They're touching other students' masks. Why would you mandate something this filthy? And I have a question. When a student vomits in a mask and they aspirate, possibly causing pneumonia, what will you do? You mandated it on their face. Masks are not safe, they're not healthy. My husband works in an ICU COVID unit, has for the last year and a half. He gets spit tested every year. They spray around his face to make sure he can't smell-
Ma'am, next speaker, please. Next speaker.
How you doing? Christian White. Two kids in the school system, a family of educators, and what I believe them to be, you are all not. So, first thing, and I'm not going to say much, I'm just going to say this. One thing I did find out tonight, because these people, they don't listen to us. You're not here to really listen to us clearly. But what I did see was the live feed that's typically done for these events is down. Did you know that? No one can seem to find it. Why would that be? What, oh, by accident, of course, we know that. I mean, seriously, we know disinfectant, sunlight is a great disinfectant, and we know when stuff like this is brought to light, it will get fizzled out and die. And I know that's what you're trying to hide here, but we, I have never been to one of these before, but I will be back.
Stasia Murphy, Lee County, two kids in school, one in college. If you are really concerned about our kids rather than the mask mandate and pushing for that and hating DeSantis, then why is this breaking news not on the Lee County site? And why is it not easily accessible on leeschools.net for parents to be able to see? So if I go to leeschools.net, I have to basically scroll down to the very bottom, right before the CDC proper handwashing video, and I have to click on the Florida Department of Health icon. And then when you do that, and you open up the Florida Department of Health icon, right in bright orange highlighted is a very noticeable page that says, "Breaking news: Monoclonal Antibody Therapy Treatments Available Now." So those have been proven to be working in the state of Florida. I just want to know if you really care about the students, why that's not easily accessible on your site? And then my other question is, if it's really, why is the colleges not having an uproar in COVID in their schools?
Will the following individuals please line up? Victoria Redstall, Chase Biggs, Chris Berry, Melissa Rose, Eric Metzner.
Good afternoon. I've been on that side of the table where you ladies sit. And as a former mayor and county commissioner in New Jersey, I'm a resident now of Fort Myers for the past eight years. I've also been 50 years in health and safety. 12 of those years, I worked for OSHA, the Department of Labor. And I want to let the doctors know that masks don't work. I don't care where they're getting their information. And these little surgical masks, if you don't get rid of them after each use, you're wasting your energy. And the cloth masks, they too do not work. If you have a mosquito problem, you don't build a chain length- If you have a mosquito problem, you don't build a chain-length fence around your house, okay? So it's like trying to stop a nosey one from coming through your lanai screen. And please do your research on behalf of our children and grandchildren, in my case, and reconsider this decision. I think it would be wise to do so.
Thank you. Next speaker.
How you doing? My name is Brian Biggs. Biggs, B-I-G-G-S, not Briggs. I want to talk about the real pandemic: child sex trafficking. By putting masks on these kids' face, you can't identify any of them. So by the nine of you already voting on this, tells me you guys support sex trafficking.
Mr., you're out of order.
Good.
Next speaker.
Hi. My name's Chase Biggs. I go to Island Coast High School, and I'm a sophomore, of course. I'm on the football team, so this also affects my games as we are canceling our next one as of September 8. And one of our football players recently got vaccinated. Can't say him because of the HIPAA. But we call him He-Man, as his nickname. And he right now is in a hospital bed for vaccination at our school. He is on his deathbed right now, as we are speaking. And as you guys said, you guys were doing social distancing, correct? Social distancing? Yeah. We're for that? Yeah. Well, how come we can do the one-way hallways, but we're still dick-to-butt in the hallways? Would you care to explain that? Because we are going the correct direction, but we are still slammed together. No? No excuses? All right. That's good. But why one-way hallways? Why? Why? You could have three staircases, each student can go down and up, and they can find their way, no problem. But one-way hallway, you're having all these kids smashed up together, and it's not working. It's not working. You're just infecting more.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Christopher Berry. I am a Lee County resident. I have two kids in the school. I actually wrote some positive statements about the school board and facts about the COVID masking, but I really don't want to say any of them because you guys basically have already voted for this mandate already. And you removed half the seating in the room for people to come watch the meeting. I served my country in the military and the government for over 30 years of service. I was called an insurrectionist last meeting for using my constitutional rights of freedom of assembly. I'm disgusted by this board. Masks don't work. They actually harm children, and you don't care.
My name is Melissa. I have two daughters in the school system. These are demonic entities, and we need to stick together. Remember, we have authority in Christ Jesus. These are demonic entities, and all the school boards of all the United States of America, and all of us Christians will be sticking together to take them all out. All the police officers that kick us out for our First Amendment right will also be going down with them. Do you understand? I'm a nurse, infectious disease, 13 years. Masks don't work. These doctors that sit up here that are sneering at us and looking at us like we're scumbags, they need to go back to fucking medical school.
Ma'am, you're out of order. Please. This is your last warning. Communications.
They need to remember, natural immunity is best. You are all demonic entities. You are going to be taken down.
Ma'am, you... Excuse me, ma'am. You've already had your first warning, and this is your last. She cannot speak anymore. The following individuals, please line up. Rhonda Dross, Robert Simmons, Dr. Rabaya Khan. Excuse me.
Please. Okay. We'll go ahead and take another break.
Will you go ahead and continue?
I believe we are nearing the end of our public comment, but the next speakers, please go ahead and speak.
Good evening, my name is Eric Metzger, I'm a 20-year veteran teacher here in Lee County School District, proud of it. I don't have any students in the Lee County School District, but I have had about 12,000 students in my career, and I'm thankful for that, every single one of them. I'm the options teacher that was here last meeting, we talked about different options, and I just wanted to let you know that I didn't get any reach out as far as what we could do, but I have heard some discussion, that there are some possible options. Parents want options. Split school day is possibly half attending in the morning, half in the afternoon. Opt in for Zoom Google Classroom with only one teacher who supervises that, and make sure that the ratio is pretty well managed. Attend three days of school in person, maybe two days not in person, online. Offer minimum contact options, offer schools that do masking and schools that do not, in different zones. These are options. Parents want options. Thank you for listening to the parents.
Hi, good evening, my name is Robert Simmons. I live in Lee County, I have a son that's in the schools. With all the anger, I was going to start this off with a COVID joke, but I guarantee that 99.98% of you aren't going to get it. Or you will. I'm also a medical squadron commander, medical officer in the Air Force Reserve. I work with a lot of nurses and doctors, and medics, paramedics, that when they say the masks don't work, and I trust them more than I trust anybody else in this room, honestly. But here's the thing, if you've been wearing your mask for more than three or four hours, and I guarantee you, everybody wearing a mask in this room probably has, that mask is no good anymore, and you're probably causing more germs and everything to get into your face than it is. And if you're sitting there between two pieces of plastic, between you and the other person, you obviously are just trying to make a political message, and you don't trust the mask yourself. You probably drive by yourself in your Prius with your mask on. Okay, four of you are up for election. I guarantee you, the one that's sitting in the center, I'm-
Thank you, sir, thank you. Madam Chair, I believe this concludes our public comment.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. We have, we have received thousands of emails on the face covering issues. I would like to share two of the emails with you today. One from a teacher, and one from a student. I will not read the whole entire email. By the-
Excuse me. Excuse me, excuse me.
We can get one minute for the comments.
One minute.
We're taking our recess now.
No, it don't count.
I'm like A S P child, well, I guess it's never about your damn vote.
We're not going to sit here and chant.
I thought so much.
You don't know what we hear.
Very much, ma'am, you're out of order, please. I know that you're leaving. Thank you, ma'am, thank you, sir.
I will go ahead and continue reading the letter from the teacher. By the end of the preschool week, my pregnant colleague told our team she was having symptoms, and had tested positive for COVID. She missed an entire first week of school, and when she returned, she was still exhausted because the virus had completely drained her. The cases only grew from there. More than I saw last year, and the only real difference I could detect was the absence of masks. The data on mask wearing is clear, and I am asking that you reinstate the mandate without opt-out features. By now you have heard from a colleague of mine, who has worked tirelessly to craft a letter to the interim superintendent. And you as the board members. The letter includes facts from the district's town hall, as well as an accurate and fair assessment of the dangers surrounding the instability practice of continuing to mask to support an option to opt out of mask in our schools. I ask that you read her letter, and take note that nearly 300 employees have shown their support for this message, by signing the petition that was only released Saturday 8/28/21. We would appreciate your attention on this matter, and hope you will understand that a large portion of us are unable to attend the board meeting for a variety of reasons, including but not limited to noticing the disruptive nature of previous board meetings that address this topic, caring for ourselves and for our own children who are sick or quarantined, planning and creating lessons to continue to engage our students. Obligated to additional employment after work, caring for our families, in the case of bus drivers finishing routes, and anticipating an early morning, so unable to have late evenings, etc. So now, so know that our lack of presence is no one indicates that we do not have a real and valid concern. We urge you to make the morally sound, compassionate, common sense decision for our school family. Thank you for your time. One of many concerned teachers. And the other is from a student. I am a student in Lee County, ready to express my concern for COVID-19 and mask mandates in our schools. The Lee County School District website states, "The School District of Lee County emphasizes the importance of providing a safe, secure, healthy environment for all." If this were true, you would mandate masks in school. Within the first 13 days of school, the district already had more than half of the cases from the entire school year last year. Source. The only difference, masks, masks worked last year. This is an emergency. As of Thursday, Lee Health is 99% capacity, and COVID-19 deaths have more than quadrupled in the past month, source. My mom, who is a pediatrician, has come home in tears after sending children to the hospital with COVID-19. The school board's lack of action has killed, which we have not killed, people. If you care at all about the health and safety of Lee County students, and teachers, and their families, you will mandate the masks in schools. And the reason I'm reading just two of these, as I said, we receive thousands and thousands of emails, and that's from both sides. So I just wanted to share just two of those. These are difficult and trying times. We know and understand that everyone does not see eye to eye on this topic. We understand that it is, it is sensitive. We respect parents' rights as we try our best to protect our students and staff. We have a difficult balance, the decision made by the superintendent today strikes that balance, and is, for short, for a short period of time, very narrowly tailored to address the health crisis in our local community. Honestly, if a mask can save or protect one life, isn't it worth it? Shouldn't we do all we can for our fellow human beings? The teachers that are under so much stress, our bus drivers, cafeteria workers, our staff, our students. Thirty days of inconvenience for the possibility of protecting, saving one life. That is what this is about. And moving to our board recommendation, first of all, thank you for letting me read that. And the board, there is a request for discussion on Board Policy 1.181. Is there any discussion? And I will open this if there's any discussion. Ms. Patrica.
So as I mentioned earlier, Attorney DePree Bruno and Dr. Savage, if I may, direct questions through the chair?
Yep.
I have some questions, and then I have some comments as well. A constituent emailed me and said, "Making a policy based on court cases seems unstable and inconsistent at best." And I agree with that statement. So I have a couple of questions about the law and where we stand today. What is the next step? Attorney DePree Bruno, please. It's my understanding that an appeal will result in an automatic stay, but that can go back to Cooper. Just please talk me through that, and if you can also talk about the federal case that's pending.
I'm trying to see if there's anything that just came up through the, our little work group. But with regards to the stay, I mean, at this point, what we're anticipating, and this is all guessing, because we don't know what's going to happen just yet. But at this point, what we have is a possibility, the governor has indicated that he's going to appeal. If he appeals, there could be an automatic stay. If there is a stay, that means everything pretty much stays as is, and we kind of go back to the executive order. The Judge Cooper's order would not be in effect. So right now, from a legal standpoint, there are all kinds of cases that are out there. I know Miami-Dade just received the case, I know that there's a case in Palm Beach, there's just all kinds of cases. So the legal, where we are from a legal standpoint is gray. We don't have a final answer. All we know at this point, we have Judge Cooper's order, and that is what is in effect. And I don't even think we've received, I haven't gotten a copy of the actual written order just yet. So until some of these legalities kind of clear themselves out and go through the process, we are stuck in a very gray area.
So I appreciate that explanation, and Dr. Savage, I appreciate where you landed in terms of the, if I can direct some comments through the chair. I appreciate where you landed in terms of requiring masks, but I don't think we, but we, you and I, would have gotten to that conclusion in the same way. Because regardless of Judge Cooper's ruling on Friday, and regardless of an automatic stay, or the governor's success on appeal, I believe we have the legal authority to institute a mask mandate with a limited parental opt-out. And these are the reasons why. So laws, whether they be statutes, or rules, or orders from the governor, or regulations, all of them, inform us how to conduct ourselves in an ordered society, and I did talk about that at our last meeting. Every single word in a law has meaning. Every single word has to be interpreted, and every single word has meaning. And words that are not in a law also have meaning. They also impact the interpretation of a statute or a rule. So if we look at Surgeon General Riffkey's Emergency Rule 64 DER 2112, it states, "Students may wear masks or facial coverings as a mitigation measure. However, the school must allow for a parent or legal guardian of the student to opt out the student from wearing a face covering." The rule does not say an unlimited opt-out. The rule does not say an unrestrained opt-out. The rule does not say an unfettered opt-out. It simply says opt-out. The opt-out term has no qualifiers to it whatsoever. So in my estimation, as the rule stands today, and even if the governor ultimately wins his appeal, I believe we can still legally implement the opt-out provision with qualifiers, such as medical exemptions as reflected in 504s and IEPs, and I believe that's the process we're going to be using. I interpret the lack of qualifying words surrounding the term "opt-out" to mean that the rules allow local school districts to exercise local control afforded to us in the state constitution. I believe the rule, as currently written and enforced, intends to encourage local control in decision-making regarding mask mandates, while encouraging districts to closely consider how narrowly tailored our mitigation measures are. As we know, any parent is free to challenge our mask mitigation guidelines through a due process hearing, and through a showing, as Attorney DePree Bruno mentioned earlier, through a showing of reasonable, narrowly tailored mask mitigation guidelines, we are operating within the confines of the rule, again, regardless of the outcome of the appeal. And these are the reasons why I was prepared to come here tonight, and direct the superintendent to implement a mask mandate, because I believe we are in compliance with the law. to implement a mask mandate, because I believe we are in compliance with the law, again, regardless of Cooper's, Judge Cooper's decision on Friday, or the governor's success on appeal. I do have a couple of questions for you now, Dr. Savage. How are we going to be letting parents know about the HOPE Scholarship? If they want to pursue it because of the new mask guidelines?
Do you want to address any of the legal piece of the Cooper fine? Because it did address the HOPE bullying. I mean, you want to start legal first, or just let me go through?
Yeah, you can go on.
Thank you. Through the chair, just the HOPE Scholarship, you know, there's already in existence the HOPE Scholarship as it pertains to bullying, the HOPE Scholarship as it pertains to the mask harassment side. You know, that was also discussed within the ruling. I want to see the written, the full written response of Judge Cooper's ruling to ensure the full piece, because I did speak to that in the verbal ruling. So I'd want to certainly have that to be a part of it. We were anticipating, by rolling this out on the first, that gives us a little bit more time to unpack every piece of that aspect of it. That's something that we certainly considered as we went through this. Also, just wanted to kind of touch base with your, kind of the rationale that you kind of walked through with these different pieces. One thing that, you know, I kind of felt that after we saw this, this Friday decision, was that essentially what it did for the first time was express that this is not necessarily settled law. So I think just the fact that there is some potential ambiguity, regardless of if there is a stay, I think that that kind of validates for us, not that we have to use strictly Cooper's rationale, but just to say that essentially what was unchallenged law up at that point in terms of any, you know, formal judicial finding, now that there is that piece, I think that that essentially establishes that there is a potential conflict there. And so I think that we probably are within our right now to defer to our attorney, but I would think that we are within our right to, as long as we feel we have a justified position and a basis by which we're doing this and exerting our local control, I think just reflecting a lot of the rationale that you stated. That was part of my intention for bringing it up earlier, was just that just because we may see a stay does not mean that we'll reverse where we are. I think where we are right now is kind of validated by some of the judicial wisdom kind of showed through that piece of our ability to locally control. But again, we'll see how that process plays out and kind of what the competing rational thoughts are on that, and we'll just continue to monitor that piece. We also know that a lot of other districts are in a similar position to us. Well over half of the students in our state are now in districts that are in a similar course, where they have a mask mandate in place. So that's a significant number of students in our district and districts that are also looking at this, each with some interesting, unique approaches in their kind of legal basis for which they felt many of them who issued their mandate while the executive order still appeared to carry the force of law. So there may be, you know, even additional rationale beyond what happened on that Friday ruling. So I just wanted to kind of echo that as well.
Good, I appreciate that. And then, I think the next big thing I'd like to discuss or suggest is that we, as a board, take some kind of consensus or direct Dr. Savage to put together a task force to address many of the concerns that brought up, were brought up during this afternoon's workshop. And I'm not talking about a task force of parents and community members, I'm talking about a task force of scientists and medical professionals and education professionals, so that they can look at the situation that's requiring us to put a mask mandate in place and determine the soonest possible time for us to remove that mask mandate, and not just look at mask mandates, but look at all mitigation measures, and determine the point at which we can start to remove the mitigation measures. So for example, having students facing forward in rows. I know that that's tremendously, that has tremendous negative impact on education, and if we can get those kids back in groups with masks on, you know, next week because of the spread, then let's remove that measure. But I think it's important for you to be surrounded by experts who can advise you, and then you can report to the board and the public and be as transparent as humanly possible through this process, so that kids will know, students will know, families will know, staff will know, there is an end in sight here. We just need to meet specific measures. And I wouldn't be happy with a 10% community spread, because that doesn't take into account the educational value that is depressed by having these mitigation measures in place. Am I making sense? So I'd be really, really happy. The other piece of that is, I believe today, based on the conversations that we've had, you don't necessarily have all of the data. But I think that as we separate ourselves more from today and go into the future, the further we go into the future, the less data we have, the less likely we are to be able to prove that this mitigation measure is narrowly tailored, right? We have got to be relying on data in showing that we are doing the best we possibly can, given the current circumstances in Lee County, in order to be able to show that these measures are narrowly tailored, and so that that argument isn't weakened. Am I making sense?
Through the chair, that is absolutely very clear to me, and I think it makes excellent sense, just to be able to keep this data focus. I think it'll demonstrate the transparency that I think our public has requested as well. And it's also some of the similar direction I've had with staff, just in terms of trying to get valid data first and foremost, but I think, would you be open to the idea of us pulling in a lot of our community data as well from our hospital system, just all that local data that's beyond just our school system? Because one of the things that we haven't discussed quite a bit today is, well, it's pretty evident that children aren't having the same proportion of negative circumstances that many of the older age groups are. We definitely can say that, while it's true in the hospital system, it's a very small percentage of the overall patients that are children, it's really the family members in their homes, specifically unvaccinated family members, that we are seeing, you know, with fatalities and hospitalizations that are a large concern as well. Then students can just end up being folks who transmit the virus. As well as, you know, we do have some students who are extremely negatively impacted by this as well. So would you be open to all of those kind of data sources and pulling that all together?
Oh yeah, 100%. But again, you know, the data isn't the only, isn't the be all, end all. We need education experts in there as well, who are pushing back a little bit and saying, you know, at what point of decrease in spread doesn't make sense for us to improve the quality of education in our schools, right? And I don't know what that magic mix is, but I think the community, I know I would feel better if I was getting weekly reports from experts like that. Not that your pandemic team isn't fantastic, but I don't think that there is science and medicine focused. I've got a lot more, and if you want me to stop so other people can have a turn, I will.
Okay, yeah, hold on. Anybody else has comments or questions?
She can finish. I have one right after.
Ms. Fisher?
I would like for Mrs. Patrica to finish.
Okay. Same with you, Ms. Stephenelli?
Yes, I'd like for her to finish.
Everybody okay with that? Okay, please.
Okay, I mean, I've really got a lot. All district operated, I'm sorry, all district operated buildings, yes, sir? Will this apply to all district operated buildings, including the boardroom?
Yes, all buildings in the district, and this indoors. This is indoors, as well as outdoor, large congregating space. If folks are having to come in close quarters outside, then we'd use our outdoor protocols that we used last year.
And that was my next question. So at a football game, am I now wearing a mask?
I'd have to go back to our team to double check on what our capacity thresholds are with this in mind.
Okay, thank you. And then I have two scenarios that I'd like you to walk me through, so that I can understand. The first is, a parent sends their child to school without a mask and instructs their child to refuse to wear the mask and to use his or her phone to record any school personnel that enforces new mask mitigation guidelines. What does the teacher do, the principal, the para, the SRO? That's the first question, and I'm just going to get the second one out there now. What if it's not a student, instead it's an employee? Could you walk us through those scenarios and tell us what our schools can expect?
Yes, we actually did have a staff working on two very such similar scenarios today in terms of mapping out the specific protocols. Before I answer that, I just want to, as an aside, just reiterate something very important to our public who may be watching, specifically the folks who may be most frustrated by the decision made today. Please understand that this is not in any way a school-based decision. This is no way driven by administrators and teachers, you know, inviting this onto them. And so I would just, you know, because our student learning is our top priority, I just ask that you direct any potential hostility or frustration at our district apparatus instead of at the individual schools, as they had no say in that piece. It's not a school-by-school decision, and as a result, we do not really want any of the difficulty being associated to school district, to school staff. That said, we understand that we can't necessarily ensure that that will happen, so we do have specific guidelines that we are giving to all of our school-based leaders. We're going to be meeting with our principals tomorrow morning to go over kind of the implications of this particular piece, as well as some specific kind of scripted situational guidance that we're giving them on a number of pieces. So to kind of address the two that you've given. First is a parent without a mask. Again, we did have some situations last year where there were some, it wasn't necessarily students, a few, and so we do have a kind of protocol we follow essentially to kind of walk them back to a functional place, where our idea is not to target students in any way. We understand that they're kind of caught, in some cases, in a rock and hard place. This is really an attempt for us to try to work with our families the best we can, and so we're going to follow the same process that we used last year in that type of de-escalation, as well as providing options for families when that does not happen. Potentially based on the conduct that is used, there could be disciplinary consequences, depending on how that situation plays out, but our intention is certainly to de-escalate it in a positive way, to help everyone kind of work together. The second particular piece, not being a student, let's say it is a staff member. I fully anticipate, you know, I've done a lot of school visits, and I've seen many staff not wearing masks. So I am very confident that there will be many folks who are very upset by this news. And so I am anticipating there will be some pushback through our staff. However, last year, we had a similar mandate in place all year, and folks found a way to make it work. That said, for employees and whatnot, if there is that piece, they are expected to follow within their employment guidelines. And so if those things are not done, we have a progressive discipline process to address any such deficiencies. Again, we have no interest in hurting anyone, in terms of offending anyone, it's really just about safety. And that's why, you know, following the well-established processes that we had last year are those things that we will continue to rely upon, because they are known, they're things that employees were used to last year. I think we all hoped they'd be behind us, and so I'm not trying to say that, you know, I think it'll all happen smoothly. I think we're in a little bit more of a volatile period right now in terms of the passion and the energy of this issue, but we're going to be very respectful of our staff. We really appreciate the nature of where they're at right now, and we'll have, we'll handle it as delicately as we can.
Okay, good, thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. DePree Bruno, were you going to say? No? Okay, I'm sorry.
Should I keep going?
You have more?
Oh, yeah. So we talked about the IEP and 504 process that was in place last year, and you've indicated that we will continue to use that process. And from where I sit, that process was implemented with fidelity and a high degree of excellence. Attorney Schroed did have one of those hearings go in front of an ALJ, and that ALJ found on behalf of the district, which, again, shows that the requirements, the mitigation requirements we have in place are narrowly tailored if they have passed muster of an ALJ.
Yes, I wanted to echo that. You are correct, utilizing our 504 process, which is how we would typically review the medical accommodations or an ADA process, we will follow that same process again with our students. And even staff, if they have a medical exemption or a disability-related exemption, they follow a set process as well.
And if I may jump in right on that one as well, the same for the 501, 504s, the process for that would be expedited, where it's not going to take them a long, drawn-out process for making this happen?
Yes, we had that very question with our labor relations today, and they were able to process a significant number of these cases in a very short, rapid period of time in terms of staff, as well as in the schools. We're really trying to get the minimum level that we can accomplish to do it, to expedite, so that these don't drag on.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Patrica.
I just, I wanted to emphasize what you said, Dr. Savage, about staff in our schools. This is a decision that's made by the eight of us at this table. If Dr. Savage did not implement a mask mandate with a limited parental opt-out tonight, I believe, from the fact that four of us had asked for this special meeting tonight, I believe we would have directed him to do so. So while Dr. Savage made the decision, I think it's important for the public to know that I support it, and I don't know who else at this table supports it, but the pressure isn't all on him. The pressure is on us as a board, as a leadership team, and please, 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 respect the people in our buildings. Our teachers and our administrators and our food service people and our bus drivers are working hard, very, very, very hard to make all of this work, and none of this is as a result of their decision-making, this is our decision-making. So anybody that's watching, if you're mad, bring it to us. Please continue to show respect in our buildings for our staff. I have a couple, just a couple more, and then I'm done. Do we need outside counsel? So as we work our way, and we don't need to decide this tonight, but I want us to be thinking about this, as we work, as these cases work their way through the appeals system, if the Department of Education is once again given the ability to enforce the rule, and they come to us and tell us that we're in violation of the rule, do we need outside counsel who can support us as we move through that process, as other districts have done? I'm not sure it makes any sense to reinvent the wheel. It might make sense to join forces, not join forces with another district, but use the same firm that's replying on behalf of all these districts. I'm not suggesting that we sue the state. Understand, I am not suggesting that. I'm simply suggesting that we get expert counsel who can help illustrate to the state that we are in compliance with the law. Two more things. I want to thank all of the healthcare workers who are out there on the front lines for our community, and I want to thank all of the law enforcement. And Chief Nuland, I felt very safe here tonight. Thank you for the new processes that you've put in place and the leadership that you've shown here tonight. Those are my comments for now.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Okay, just very briefly, as I said this afternoon, and I wanted to reiterate it this evening, that I've heard from people, emails and texts and phone calls, that we are blaming the people that don't wear masks. And I just want to reiterate again that, as the superintendent said this afternoon, this is just one mitigation. There are other things. As I sat in the pandemic task force meeting this morning, the team meeting, they really are flipping over every rock and every stone and every corner to make sure that decisions are made, are touched by every part of this building and every department. That's why everyone is in the room, which is a wonderful thing, because if someone says, "Well, we can do this," well, the academics or, you know, people with maintenance say, "Well, no, I don't think that'll work because da-da-da-da-da." That's what negotiation is all about. That's what, working together to find the best solution. And I can only speak for me, everyone else speaks for themselves. The masks are not the only issue. We realize, and I've read data as well, that even with everybody masked, it may mean 30, I think it was something like 37% effectiveness or whatever. But if you don't believe that wearing some type of a mask keeps the particles and all of that stuff down, take your phone, because I did this the other day. Every phone call I took, I used the speaker on my phone, and I held the phone here. By the end of three or four phone calls, there's specks all over the phone. Just try it. Don't wear a mask and just talk, and just keep your phone here, and see how many specks are on your phone at the end of it. Whether you agree that they're dangerous or not, they're there. And that's, that's not even science, it's just, it happens. So I think people need to understand, there's the cleaning aspect that I still want to make sure we are doing the cleaning afterwards. When we said last year that on Wednesday and Friday, we were going to fog, and some people say, "Well, fogging doesn't work." Every mitigation that we do does its own part. And this one may not, you know, save this or this one, but together, they make a difference. The protocols that we had in place last year, and it's interesting to me that we didn't have all this last year. have all this last year. It was just stated, "This is what we're going to do," and it happened, unless I missed something. So I don't really understand. No one is judging you whether you wear a mask or not, but realize it is a part of a mitigation. We also have additional testing sites that for months now we haven't had. I predict that in the next couple of weeks, we're going to see a drop because they opened up the big one at the baseball field, we have the testing available at school, and people are now running all over saying, "Where can I get a test?" Another part of mitigation. It's not one thing. It's not one person. It's all of us and it's all the things together. We're working on catching up on the tracing. And like I said this afternoon, contact tracing is very important. If we're behind and DOH is behind a week or, you know, 10 days, during that period of time, those people that were infectious are spreading it and spreading it and spreading it. And we've got to contain that. And please just remember, it's just 30 days. It's two 14-day cycles. And the superintendent said this afternoon, "If it's not lowering the numbers, then, you know, we revisit it." It's just 30 days of compromise. Now, and I heard people talk tonight, you know, putting our children in a mask for a year. It's not a year. It's 30 days is all we're asking for. I just, I don't know what else to say. I was just floored by some of the comments tonight. I really was. I won't go any further into that. I'm just asking people, please have an open mind. It's about compromise and it's about putting it all together to see if we can't make a difference and help everybody. Pretty much all I got to say.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Anyone else has any comments? Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, and I think it is important for the public to understand that, at least understand those of us on the board that are in support of Dr. Savage's moving to use our board policy, our emergency policy. I think it's very called for. And I do want to remind everyone who talks about the masks and masks don't work. We primarily wear masks to protect others. That's why I wear a mask. And it was pointed out today about the particles that come out as we speak. And it was absolutely correct about what is in the air and the fact that, yes, they could come through a mask like the one I'm wearing. However, as I'm speaking, if I'm speaking close to you or in an area where there are a lot of people in an indoor area, I am really helping to protect my fellow citizens. And I remember a time, as a person who does love this country and considers myself a patriot, I remember a time when that was America. That's the America I know, that we care about our fellow citizens and that we respect them in terms of their health and that we're protective. So I do support this. And again, I'm hoping that those of you out there that have children and maybe have some misgivings about a child, your child, wearing a mask, to remember that, and somebody said, "Have you asked your children?" If you ask the little children, they don't, you know, they pick up vibes from those around them and they don't have the fear of wearing a mask. They're reflecting what's around them. And as Ms. Gittens said, it's 30 days and we'll see if things are going the right way in 30 days. But I agree with most of what was said here. Appreciate the insights that Mrs. Patrica added to the conversation. And I'm just hoping that it is, on September 1st, smooth transition into the children wearing masks. And honestly, love for your children can be demonstrated by not making your children pawns. That's, I know what I'm saying. And it's, some people are going to say, "Well, how does she know?" I'm a teacher, I was a teacher. I know how children respond. And really, you don't want to put your children in that situation. That's, and that's all I have to say on it, but I do support Dr. Savage.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan, did you have any comments or?
Well, I'm not quite sure where we are. I mean...
We're just, the only thing that we have on this agenda is a discussion for the 1.18 emergency requirement protective gear, which was implemented today by the superintendent. So this is just open for conversation because we had already publicized this, so that's where we're at.
Okay.
If you would like to, you don't have to, but...
This is my opportunity then to say that I support the superintendent and I'm grateful for his leadership. And I'm grateful for the depth at which Ms. Patrica has explored this, the legal aspects of this.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Ms. Fisher?
Yes, thank you. And I want to say to my fellow board members, thank you, Ms. Patrica, for your in-depth review of that and helping to voice for the board and ask questions that needed to be asked. I want to thank Dr. Savage, the staff, Attorney Bruno, for all of the additional time that they have put in, along with the members of our medical community, the Department of Health and the Lee Health people in working on this. This is all about a concerted community effort. We're all in this together. So I think that the health and safety of our kids are paramount. Someone did comment about teaching health to our kids, and I think that's something we need to take another look at because that would be helpful in the prevention of future problems, health problems, that would put people at more at risk if there is a virus. So I hope that we can specify the process for ensuring cooperation at the school level with minimal discipline activity so that the effects of this decision-making are lessened at the school level. They have enough to do there. And I think that Mr. Newlin, Mr. Parfit, all of our law enforcement people, thank you for your additional efforts these last couple of meetings in helping to keep everyone here safe. Thank you.
So, Ms. Chievenelli, you said you had something?
Just one question, and I won't keep this because I know it's getting late. The union and through the chair, where are they at with this? Because no one's really talked about the teachers' voice and so I'm really curious because there's, no one was here to represent them, really, a couple of teachers. Well, you, thank you very much for being here, sir.
I know that, and I will say there were, we did receive 300 as well, 300 plus.
Yes, but most of those weren't even in Lee County. I did read through that. There's a majority, it was just a handful, so, yes, that's hard to judge on that.
Thank you. Ms. DePree Bruno?
I have no comments. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Savage?
Just a few. One is just, you know, I really appreciate that the board had this opportunity for our public to speak today. I know that some of the feedback was probably not easy for anyone to hear in terms of just some of the pointed feedback and concerns, but I think it's just so important that we continue to offer this opportunity for our public to know that at least they have that piece. I also appreciate the encouragement you gave to our Chief Newlin, his security staff, and our fantastic sheriff and FMPD details that we had, not just here but outside. Law enforcement is such a great partner in our schools, and just the fact that they could be here today, this is a very trying time, not just here in this community, but really across the country with these debates of these really hotly contested issues. And so just knowing that we can try to keep a safe environment and continue to work to make it a true expression of the civic discourse, I think is such an important aspiration for us. I know that where we sit right now, probably all sides feel a little concerned, but it just is appreciative that we continue to strive for the right type of democratic expression and do it in a respectful way. And we could not have done that without the excellent leadership of the individuals that are on guard around us right now, as well as our team committing to following the protocols and really trying to ensure that people who want to come here and express themselves can do so in a respectful way, but to make sure that their comments are heard as well, because I think it is important, we acknowledge that. I really also appreciate numerous members acknowledging that, you know, all of this is really about safety and about, and so I would just say, you know, as I said earlier, please, I encourage anyone who's out there who's very displeased with the way this played out today, you do have due process measures that are afforded to you. You know, I encourage you to utilize those and do them peacefully, you know, in whatever way that you can. Please allow our schools, which are already overwhelmed with some of the challenges they've had to deal with this year, to have a little bit of respite from any of your concern. Please bring them to us. We will, we look forward to trying to help find a path forward. And just thank you to all in this very trying time. In my entire career in leadership, I've never experienced anything like this. So thank you for your excellent suggestions, such as the task force and bringing scientists and medical professionals and experts together, specifically in the educational piece. And we've been talking about how to relax certain mitigation efforts. We wanted to demonstrate to our workforce and to our community that we were doing everything that we did at least last year and then some. But I can tell you absolutely just from the guidance that I've had, some mitigation measures have far less impact than others. And so some of the frustrations you heard today from students and so forth, that's a reflection in some cases of everything in the kitchen sink. In reality, the most precise measures that have the highest impact are really the ones that we want to focus on. So thank you for kind of giving those clear marching orders. We look forward to doing that. And just so appreciative for everyone through such a difficult experience. Thank you.
I'm sorry, did you have, I know like Ms. Chievenelli had asked a question. Did we have a response to her question regarding?
In terms of the union?
Yes.
Yeah, we can certainly have our labor relations counterpart, just, you know, the union can certainly speak for themselves. I would not want to speak for them unequivocally on this. Certainly, we've had lots of engagement with the union through our normal process, both unions, both the Talc and Spalk bargaining units. We've had a lot of conversation around all of these issues. So I would prefer if they would be able to kind of articulate their own position relative to that, but certainly I can talk to Mr. Rothenberg and we can get something that we can share with the board.
Thank you. Ms. Chievenelli, did you have?
Yeah, I just think it's important. I mean, and you brought up an email, but I mean, we have 12,000 employees and 300 is not even smitten a representation of that. And so it's important to make sure that we have, you know, that all stakeholders are involved in things. So that's, I'm just, it's all about transparency for me. Thank you.
No, and I appreciate that. And if you look at all the numbers, there's, what, 95,700,000 citizens in Lee County? So, I mean, there's, those numbers are great as well. But Dr. Savage, I just want to say too, as we go through this and we continue monitoring the cases and the policy, can we still, can we make sure that the ventilations, the bus windows are open so that we're keeping that ventilation moving? And then, of course, as a lot of my colleagues have mentioned, I wear the masks as well because I feel like I'm helping and protecting other people from me as well. Even though I know like the M, what is it, the N95 is supposed to be the mask to wear, which of course, if the district were to even consider buying that, that's like $20 million if you bought one for every student in the district for 255 days, which of course, that's not something that we could do. But I want to say, I definitely will support you and this is a board, so together we will go through this. And as you said, please let, let's not take this to the schools. If there is an issue, please have it come back to us. And I know that people are still asking for options and we realize that there's, we're very limited on those options as well. So we will continue to also, as you said, to continue looking for other options. So I just wanted to make sure that's, thank you for that.
I can clarify on one of those because we've had suggestions that were kind of brought up during one of the pieces today. And so, you know, one of the challenges we had this year is we didn't have access to some of the innovative learning models that we had last year, where certain requirements were relaxed and gave us more flexibility, these things that you could kind of see with that hybrid instruction. However, we're trying to find creative workarounds where we can still have the state-approved model that we can rely upon, but then supplement with some of the things that we know really seem to work best from those models. So some of those factors are going to be rolling out, I think, within a week. And so we're just going to continue to try to get better because as we said, if this, if we have recurrence of these issues, we want to be able to rely on excellent supplemental models to ensure that our kids learn at high levels.
Perfect. Thank you. Ms. Patrica, you have one more?
And that makes a point that I failed to make earlier, which is maybe in a month, maybe in two months, we get to take the mask away, but we keep that task force in place to constantly be advising us, if we have another spike, then we can easily go back into the more restrictive mitigation measures, right? That was part of what I intended to express for the task force. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Ms. Gittens, I have to...
No, 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 you're fine. I just wanted to make sure that we talked this afternoon about the simplicity of the process. And I can't say strongly enough how important that is to happen sooner than later. And I know I mentioned almost like a cartoon-type, you know, phases, this is what you do. And I really honestly believe that that would help a lot of people to understand quicker than to go through each line and all the verbiage. It's just way too much. And when people don't understand the process, that makes it even worse. So if we can please expeditiously look at how to do it, I mean, you might even put it out there to, let's say, Dunbar High School, their digital classes and say, "Here's the two pages. Make something digital and automated and let the kids do it." It's an option. That way, you know, they're getting involved, they're seeing the importance and, you know, we can do something to represent them and have them show up here. Because they know technology and that simplicity of their mind is not our technical minds. So please, 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 if we can do that sooner.
Thank you. Okay, we are moving to other business. And so if you have any other business to, that you would like to share, I'm going to start with Ms. Morgan.
Okay. Well, I was going to make other comments as well, but just basically thank yous to everybody. Thank you to the parents and students and staff for sharing personal notes, concerns, questions. As other board members have said, we've received probably over 1,000 emails, certainly lots of phone calls and text messages. Want to thank staff in the schools because this has been a rough ride. It hasn't been easy and it's going to be difficult going forward. And all I can say is that, as everyone else has said, this decision was made here. We have your back and we support you and we're grateful for all of the work that the non-classroom people have done to step up, to support everybody in the classroom while we try to work through this. As I said, I want to thank Dr. Savage for his leadership this afternoon. Chris Patrica mentioned Attorney DePree Bruno's crafting a board policy that worked really well for us as a local response to a local situation. So I wanted to thank her. I wanted to thank...
I wanted to thank Chair Jordan, Attorney Dupree Bruno, and Mr. Newlin for putting together a great team tonight, a great process tonight. I am very appreciative for everything that was done to make it possible for us to have this meeting and to listen to the public, but to feel confident while we did so. And especially thank you to the deputies. This has been a really long night for all of you and you've been on your feet all of this time and it hasn't been easy and I just really appreciate your support for our work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Ms. Vaughn, did you have anything?
Ms. Morgan had such a great list. Forgive me if I just say ditto, I appreciate every single person that has made contributions tonight. And I'm also going to anticipate my thanks and all of our thanks to the people in our schools moving ahead to September 1st because that is going to be a trying time. Hopefully, not so bad, but there'll be a few issues. So just thank you, everybody, for being so flexible. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Gittens?
Just a couple of things. First, I want to say thank you to the chair for her first delegation presentation. That's very nerve-wracking, I know, and you did a great job and thank you for doing that. Also, I wanted to mention kudos to the staff of Gateway High School and our district staff. I know Rob was there and several of the staff were at their community day at the high school. And I just stopped by for a few minutes. It was very, very good. They showed how you can get involved with the school as being a part of the community. And there were people filling out forms and wanting their signs up on the football field and the baseball field and the community was just really involved in it. And I hope that it continues to spread, not just in one part of the community, but all of the community of the students that are involved. And finally, I want to say, if you remember Stephen Covey's Seven Habits, the one that comes to mind about tonight is to seek first to understand, then to be understood. If we could, we teach that to our kids every day in Abbott and in the schools. And we as adults, I think, would, could go a long way with remembering to seek first to understand, then to be understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chievenelli?
I'm just going to say ditto as well, everybody, thank you for, all the staff here, it's, what, 8 o'clock? So thank you and thank you for the Sheriff's Department that have worked hard tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
I just ditto also, and I've already said my thank yous, but my appreciation for everyone's efforts continues. And I know that we are here to support our schools and to hope that our community will, as Stephen Covey might say, begin with the end in mind. And thank you all.
Thank you. And I'm going to say ditto to most of what my colleagues have said, as well as I appreciate the Sheriff's Department here, as well as the Fort Myers Police Department, who we do not see inside here, but they were certainly outside. So I want to, you know, give them appreciation as well. And to my colleagues, we have to stay strong and continue to do the work that we need to do. Ms. Dupree Bruno, I'm going to go back to you again and ask you if there's anything that you may have forgotten and you'd like to say now.
No, I don't have anything. Thank you, Mr. Newlin. We worked well together in trying to get this together and thank you to Fort Myers Police Department who came in and assisted us outside, which we needed, and all of their work, as well as the Sheriff's Department. So this was a good plan and it came to fruition, so thank you.
Madam Chair, did we thank our two ladies over there that were on the front line? I hope we did.
Thank you, Team Lee.
Thank you all so much for all that you did in keeping everything organized as well.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens, for reminding us of that. And Dr. Savage?
Yes, I had my comments earlier. Thank you very much.
I just, just in case you needed to, wanted to add something else. Okay. Sorry, I have to turn the page. Okay, the next scheduled meeting of the board will be on Tuesday, August 31st. There will be an action meeting at 6:00 PM. At this point, having no further business to come before this body and seeing no objection, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.